I'd like to call the work session to order for the planning commission for January. We'll start under new business, again with the capital improvement plan. Ms. Colvin.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the commission. Tonight, we're going to go over into detail. I have the experts with me, at least most of them. I have a few that were unable to make it tonight, so you have to hear from me on theirs. And if you have more questions, I will get the answers and I will email those out to you, if that's okay. Between illness and plans, we had two that weren't going to be able to make it tonight. So we'll start off tonight with Louisa County Water Authority, Pam Baumann.
Thank you. Good evening. On the list that Wanda gave me, there are three that I need to talk to you about. First one is Bowler's Mill Dam improvements. This is an ongoing, continuing request for Bowler's Mill Dam. We have signed up through NRCS for grant funding on this. The design will be 100% grant funding and the work itself will be 65% grant funding. But when our time comes up in the queue, we have to be prepared. So this is just a continuing request for that. Any questions on that one before we move on?
No, go right ahead. Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the Louisa Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant ammonia nitrogen upgrade. In order to get ammonia out of wastewater, you have to scrub it out with air, lots of air. This is going to be an improvement to add more diffused air to the treatment process. We did an optimization study thinking that we could possibly get ammonia completely written out of our permit, but that didn't work out the way we had hoped. So we are implementing some process upgrades through that optimization study, but we will need to do the upgrade with the 2027 Louisa Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant permit renewal to add additional air at the facility. That's that one. It's a continuing request to prepare for that in '27. And then there's a new one reclaiming the James River Water Authority rideaway. We're getting more and more, we probably have 50 to 60 miles now of rideaway easements that we're trying to maintain, and this one completely got away from us. And we have tried working with Central Virginia Electric Cooperative and the gas line and everybody to get with their contract to keep our stuff, our part of the easement cleared, but they seem to trim their stuff and throw it on ours. So we're going to need to reclaim that right away in order to make sure when James River Water Authority comes online that there's no leaks in that line and that we can access the air relief valves. And this is the three requests for Louisa County Water Authority.
Question.
Yes, Mr. Brooks.
Is this in one location or several locations that you've got to do this clearing or reclaiming of?
It's the James River Water Line, the raw water line from Ferncliff to Columbia.
Okay, so it's a whole run you all have to clear it?
Has to be reclaimed. The easement needs to be reclaimed. It's overgrown.
But also working on so in the future, if somebody gets a bush hog in time, so you don't have to get in there and go through a reclamation?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Next, we have the Louisa County Public School Capital Projects, and we have Doug Straley and Dave Baker and his team.
Good afternoon, Happy New Year. Wanted to, so I have several members of the team here that will speak on our projects. The first one, we were talking tonight about the middle school addition. So the addition at the middle school, which is going to be located right behind the middle school where the current modular units are located, on the blacktop which sort of overlooks the track and the stadium. The addition is really twofold. It's a 500-seat addition to our middle school, but also it will house our alternative education center, which currently is located in the modular unit out back. This will be one structure, but really two separate programs. So it's going to be one unit for two separate programs that will be not accessible except by badge or so forth. They wouldn't be accessible to each other, if that makes sense, there. So currently, our enrollment is about 75 students in our mobile units, so this is going to leave room for about 425 students in the new addition to the middle school. So I'm going to ask Mr. Weedo to speak on the specifics of the middle school.
Good evening. So the middle school additions, we're looking at about 62,500 square feet. When added to the middle school, it will give us approximately 206,000 square feet for the entire building addition included. We're looking at the potential for 32 classroom spaces for the middle school side. And then as Mr. Straley alluded to, we have the alt ed side. We're looking at 14 classrooms for the alt ed center. We will include, obviously, it will be a two-story to match up with the existing sixth-grade wing that it's going to be connected to. And it will have a cafeteria space that will seat approximately 200, which should alleviate, as the building grows, should alleviate the pressure in the cafeteria as the building gets more and more students in it. We are looking at the potential of three add alternates as we build the building. We're looking at expanding the auxiliary gym on the backside of the main gym. We're looking at replacing the chiller for the building, the chiller plant. And we're looking at renovating the existing classrooms that the school is currently using for science that aren't equipped for science. So those are the things we're looking. That is a brief synopsis of the building, subject to your questions.
Questions? Thank you.
All right, great. And also very exciting is, over the past several years, CTE has really become a focus within our school division, K-12 really, with career and technical education, STEAM and innovation across K-12, and looking at workforce development as well, and really building a better workforce, building a strong workforce for the jobs of today and tomorrow, and looking at what that looks like. So looking at, as you know, we currently have a very comprehensive high school. Our high school currently is set up with many CTE programs, which we're very excited about. And Mr. Bundrick, Mr. Bowens, and Mr. Bundrick's not here tonight, he's actually at a state CTE meeting tonight, which is why he's not here, but Mr. Bowens is here with us. But they've been laser-focused on making sure our students are able to get those skills necessary. So why would we want to build a new CTE center? So want to say, really, there's three goals, three goals of the new center. First is to get, be able to expand and get those new cutting-edge programs for those jobs of tomorrow. And as we know, it's changing every day, what that looks like. And to be able to stay on top of that, so getting the center to where we can really stay on top of that and have the flexibility within that center to meet the evolving demands that are happening. And two, is to be able to really expand the current programs that are limited now by the space in which they have. So be able to expand really successful programs, programs we want to build out and grow. And then third would be expanding the high school as a whole. So the site we're looking at putting, the center, would be the area in front of the school, if you are between, if you are familiar with where the softball field is and where the road would be, where the old high school or old middle school used to sit. That would be where we would put the center. And having that at such close proximity to where it really could expand our high school capacity as well for years to come. So those are really the three goals of it, which I think are three very important goals of why would we want to really look and expand and build a center. I'm going to ask Mr. Bowens, who is Director CTE, STEAM and Innovation, to talk a little bit more about the center and the specifics of what this means moving forward with a new CTE center.
Jeff, good evening, everyone. So as Mr. Straley said, we have those three major goals. And then within those goals, when we're looking at programs, that we're thinking about integrating new programs into the center or existing programs, we have a couple of key points that we're looking at those programs to see, are they a right fit for this center and for this growth opportunity? And that first one is that present workforce data, like he was saying, keeping up with the trends the industry needs. The second one is anticipated industry growth, what's happening right here in the community, what's happening in Virginia, what's happening in the nation. Next is student interest, where do our students, you know, get them excited about coming to school and makes them want to be there every day? So putting those kind of programs in that they like. This is a big one for me, is assessment of the site dimensions, the physical plant. It's not great for us to take a program and shove it in a space that isn't right for it. So we're really putting a lot of thought into the footprint of the building, the way that would look, and are these programs right to move into that space? And then again, that filing consideration is that related program of the relocation, like, is it fiscally responsible to move that program? If it's already in the high school and it's doing well and it has everything it needs, do we need to move it? And those are the things that we're looking at. So when we talk about the building plan itself, we're looking at approximately 54,500 square feet, give or take a few hundred. We're looking at about 255 seats additional just in the CTE center alone. CTE center courses are often capped at 20, so that number may sound a little low for the square footage, but due to state regulations and federal requirements for safety issues, we can't go over 20 in a lot of our industry-type courses, which would then expand the total capacity when you take, if we were to move programs out of the high school, that would free up space in the high school, add some more seats. So when you put those two numbers together, you get a total of about 320 additional seats. And I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the programs we're considering right now as additions to the amazing CTE program we already have. And these are all programs that have shown a strong industry need in our community. So HVAC, plumbing, electrical, marine service tech, computer-aided design and drawing, which is something we had years ago, and we had to cut, we're hoping to bring that back. CNC lab, computer-controlled equipment, electrical energy and power, a meeting space so that the students that are in that building, if we bring in industry partners and sponsors and we want to do a presentation to them, they have a space to do that. Not as big as an auditorium, but big enough to get a few classes in there. Graphic design and production, you know, I'm sure you guys are familiar with Etsy and how big that has grown. You can really make a great living out of your garage nowadays, doing some pretty basic stuff with graphic design and production. And then one of the new ones we're looking at right now is the AWS, which is Amazon Web Services. So as you all know, Amazon coming in is a big deal for us, and we're looking at, you know, there's some ways we can tweak these plans to incorporate Amazon in the overall footprint and plan of the new facility.
And then, so, and then what I'd add to that, so one of the things with the middle school, which we had just spoken, we started our design phase with that, that's moving through the design phase as we speak. This, we haven't started the design phase, we've had some conversations with the county, and one of the things we're holding up on is the conversation that we had, the question we were asked is, you know, could we maybe build this center a little bit bigger to even add to capacity for the high school, potentially? So it's a conversation we're having right, well, I say it's a conversation, we're getting ready to have some conversations about what that looks like as far as, would we want to move forward with what we just presented you, or we want to maybe add a few more seats to that and make it maybe a two-story building instead of a one-story building in the parts that could be? Those are the things we're just discussing and just trying to figure out, you know, what would be the right way to go. But certainly, this is exciting, exciting with CTE. It's something that's near and dear to my heart, and I believe it builds a better, Louisa builds a better community, it builds a better Commonwealth with what we can offer through these programs and opportunities it gives to our students, and it's just going to expand even beyond with the new center. So very exciting where this is moving. So questions about CTE?
We have sent several applicants your way to encourage them to set up partnerships. One that comes to mind most recently is Future Farms. Is that helpful to you all?
Yes, very much so. And I know Mr. Bundrick has been meeting with them, and as you send them, it's great because it's great to have those conversations. Many of those conversations he is having out in front, but when you have conversations, and we certainly want to speak with them as well. And one of the things that reference that as we go through this, I want to say, and I referenced it in the goals, but having the flexible space. We really feel like what's going to be extremely important in this new center is having spaces that are flexible because things are really evolving quickly. What jobs look like change, the demands change, so be able to have flexible spaces where you're not tied down to any specific program as you move through and can really flex those spaces. So, which is why those conversations are so important.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Weaver. So this, the center, the center is going to be self-contained? And the students will come in, say like eighth graders or ninth graders, and work through that program all the way through?
So the center will be a part of the high school. So just as our tech, our career and tech program is a part of the high school now, it will be part of the high school footprint. So whether that's a connection or whether it's by a walkway, a covered walkway, it will be part of what the high school is now. So students will just take courses.
It seems like a lot of these centers around the state, they're losing students because they're not letting them come in at an early enough age. You know, it's, they don't, they can't see the handwriting on the wall. They're good with hands-on things, but they're not good in the academic necessarily.
What's unique about Louisa and the
That's what I'm saying, is it going to be self-contained? Are they going to be allowed to come in early or are they going to have to wait and take a test like a lot of these schools and not come in until they're juniors or seniors?
We open our programs up to ninth graders. There are some video required programs that you can't start till you might be a 10th or 11th or 12th, not many, but there are a few like that. But we have a comprehensive course catalog that we give to every eighth grader before they transition over to the high school, and our high school students get it too, so they can look through all those courses. And we open them up to all of our students. And that is one of the great things about Louisa County, is most school divisions, like you said, will have a tech center. You'll have to apply to go there, you may get in, you may not. We have opportunity for all students, at least we try to. Some of our programs are overcrowded, which is why we need this center, so that we don't have to turn anyone away. Because our goal is if a student has an interest in that area, we're going to bring them in and get them trained up, and they're either going to find out really quick that they love it and they want to go into that career, or they're going to find out that they don't like it and they have the opportunity to take other CTE classes.
Yeah, I like that. That'll really reduce a lot of your space in the high school, give you more space.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir. The next item were the Architectural Construction Services. So those are services that will be on the construction side. So we were able to, we obtained a grant for much of the architectural services up to this point. We did get an additional $637,000 appropriation for the design phase for both buildings. So we had a $1.8 million grant, and then we had the $637,000 grant. So that gave us the money to do the design portion of the project, which was really getting the plans in order. 1.1 would be the additional construction side of the architectural services, just FYI there.
Is a drama program, is that completely separate from the other areas? I've noticed any of refinish the stage or?
Yeah, in the auditorium, so there's a stage refinishing. So it was painted when we moved in, it just needs to be refinished now, so we've been in there.
So when those children come in as ninth graders, they can expect to graduate going through the drama program if they want to?
Oh, yeah, that'll be, when you say refinish, that's probably a two-week process over the summer that, though, speaking on that, but if you want, it's about a two-week process over the summer. But certainly, the stage will not be off limits to anyone. I mean, that's going to be during the summer when no one's using it. Yes, sir.
Questions? Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then the last piece I believe I was supposed to speak on were the elementary schools, which is out about five, 10 years out. And it says, have you noticed, it says schools because one of the things that we're not sure of, and quite frankly, we haven't had, we're not, I don't know if we have the data necessary right now to make these decisions. I think as we would get closer to needing them, we would, whether we have a new school or whether we do something similar, we did a Jewett, which was an addition to one of our, to the school. And I think that would just be, I would think we would look at that as we get closer. Right now, we're not at a point where we certainly are in need of that. We're looking at five to 10 years and depending on the amount of growth between now and then, whether that would be closer to the five-year plan or whether the 10-year plan, but just FYI on that. Thanks, sir.
Could I ask you one question on
Yes, sir.
School buses?
Yes, sir.
How did the electric buses go?
Yes, they've gone very well. Ms. Coles, in fact, she and I had a conversation about this last week. So electric buses, we have four electric buses at this point, and they're going extremely well. They've held up well, they've held up in the cold, that was a concern, they've held up in the heat, and she's had great luck with them. So she said that she's been very impressed thus far. And I would say very impressed, no less or more impressed than
Right.
the buses we have, but certainly impressed with the buses. So she was very pleased. Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Okay, the next set of projects are for economic development for Andy Wade, and he was unable to make it tonight. So I'll try to go through these two quickly, and if you have any questions I can't answer, I'll try to add to that and get you those answers. The first one is the Regional Business Park Transportation Enhancement Project. This is a continuation from the last couple of years. We have some grant funding, we've already gotten from VDOT on this, we've already started this, but this is to continue with the road enhancements out at the business park to make that a site that is really enhance and bring in new businesses there. Once the roads are completed and everything's done, they will go into the VDOT system at that point. Any questions on that one? That one, I think you've heard about through the past couple of years, but if you need more, I can get some more information. Okay. The next one, in fiscal year '23, the county purchased the lake and a wastewater treatment plant. And so we've currently got it running and everything's going well, but this project here would be to upgrade it. There are current customers on the treatment plant right now, but with the upgrade, it would allow for new customers and new businesses to come on. So it expands that system and also brings it up into more today's technology than's out there right now. Any questions on that one? Oh, thank you. Okay. So next, we have Chris Hawk, and she is our fire chief for Fire and EMS.
Yes, I brought Chris Lee with me from our logistics to help me with any questions that we may have. I think we have three things that we're going to cover today with you all and for a couple of future plans, and then one CIP request for volunteer station. The first one that I have is Zion's Crossroads. It's actually a relocation that we are looking at for the Zion's Crossroads Fire Department based on where it is located from Poindexter Road and moving that to an area down the 15th corridor, just past the diverging diamond in that area. What will this do? It will help with the call response in that area. What I've handed you out is a heat map. I wanted to show you that we have a data, data Analysis, yeah. A program that we got last year that the Board of Supervisors sponsored and supported in us getting, which was called Continuum. And it is, it actually, we get a lot of data from that program. And what this does, it gives us the heat map, it lays out where the call volumes are in certain areas, okay? So when we talk about moving stations or adding stations, we obviously have to look at data, a lot of data, call volumes, response times, things like that, okay? So we'll be looking at all of this as we move towards thinking about these stations. The station, Zion's Crossroads where it is right now, we were given during COVID, during 2020, federal money to also put up the existing buildings, which is a, it's a trailer, kind of like a double-wide trailer. They're extremely nice, very nice. I've been housing five to six career staff people out there, but they will quickly run out of that. They will quickly outlive that, and also the maintenance will become a little bit more for those types of buildings. Company 24 in Gordonsville Fire is one of our locations, that they come into our county, they cover some of the calls, they actually have an area of call volume for Louisa County. The county supports them and pays them a small amount of money to come into Louisa to run calls. They are 100% volunteer, they are 100% fire. There is no ambulance service located in their building in Gordonsville, okay? So most of the calls for ambulance comes from Company Seven Zion Crossroads, now Treviyan's Company Six, Company One, and then if we absolutely needed, it could come out of Orange County. So those response times are increased. The current bunkhouse was purchased, oh, I said that. The station can look very much like the existing Company Eight New Bridge footprint that we have at the lake, but on a much bigger scale, has to be. This area in Zion's Crossroads, there are many areas to that district that you can be waiting on the next due, 15 to 17 minutes. It's a long time for the next due to come. If it is one of the volunteer stations, they can come quickly if they are staffed, anywhere from Gordonsville, Fluvana, and East Ravanna. So, call numbers. The call numbers for the year of 2023 I brought for you to discuss, and they were a total number of 7,800 calls for the whole county. 1,325 calls were in District Seven alone for 2023. Any questions on that one? Okay. Moving on to Ferncliff and Shannon Hill. The reason I put it Ferncliff slash Shannon Hill, this is an additional. By moving Zion's Crossroads to a more appropriate location, of course, it leaves an area in where it was covering, down the 64 corridor towards the east. I'm not sure where this location will be proper to place it when the time comes. Therefore, as I said before, we'll be looking at Continuum, we'll be looking at data, we'll be looking at heat maps, we'll be looking at response times and call volumes in those areas to decide the most appropriate. And we will discuss it with, you know, staff, the county, the county staff, and discuss the most appropriate location for Ferncliff. Again, it will, it can look very much like New Bridge Company Eight's footprint on a slightly larger scale. I'm not sure that it would need to be to the scale that the Zion's Crossroads one will be, but would definitely need to be just slightly larger to house a few more pieces of apparatus that are specialty pieces that would be required for possibly the interstate and hazardous incidents. When I wrote these CIP requests, I was actually adding money for the building supply cost increases. So when you look at your, at the CIPs, you may notice that I requested 6 million for the Zion's Crossroads, but then I said 7 million the next year for Ferncliff or Shannon Hill. And that was me thinking and not being in a building cost capacity, that building supplies have gone up tremendously, they keep fluctuating. I spoke with Anderson Wolfalk this afternoon, and we discussed that possibly I'd reach out to Wanda and flip those CIP number requests and put the 7 million out to Wanda and flip those CIP number requests and put the $7 million towards the Zion's Crossroads. He believed that would be more appropriate, and the $6 million towards the Fern Cliff or Shannon Hill one. And that also could help be based on having an engineer, obviously, to help us with those. Any question on, on the Fern Cliff or Shannon Hill? Any question on the heat map and how that works?
It looks like the county, excuse you, Mr. Chair. Looks like the county's fairly even except for Mineral, Louisa, and Zion, with Louisa getting super hot.
They, they have a, they have the largest amount of call volume, absolutely.
In the town?
Yes, sir. Town and outskirts. I would say the outskirts of it, going up 208, out 22, down to Davis Mill.
Okay.
Would you?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am.
And I guess that's been pretty consistent every year?
Yes. Zion's Crossroads actually is now the third largest. It's, it's Louisa, Mineral, and then Zion's, and Zion's is catching up on them, and it's, it's the growth. It's a large growth area out there, so, yes, sir.
We're getting a red hot area, aren't we?
The last thing I wanted to discuss with you is for Locust Creek Volunteer Fire Department's expansion, and I believe you all were giving their, given their CIP packet. What they are requesting is an extension of the bay area to the left side of the building of a 20-foot by 78-foot area. This would be of block, block and brick, okay? They currently house two career staffs daily. They requested last year to add two additional staff. We have hired additional staffing, and they are currently in the process of getting what we call precepted. You don't just hire somebody and put them right on an ambulance and say, "Good luck", right? So they have to go through, through a packet that we put them through to show that they are qualified and capable of taking care of patients and of fire incidents. So we have those people. They should be able to be placed in the house at Locust Creek within the next two months. Besides that being for then career staff, we also have the volunteer base that are there on a regular basis. So the Board of Pharmacy is, is issuing some changes through the Commonwealth, and one of the changes that is unique is the Commonwealth is one state, the only state in, in the nation that actually does a drug box exchange program. We carry the drug box on our, our ambulance. We go to the hospital. We change the drug box at the, at the pharmacy. They give us a new drug box and we, and we go. No other state does this anymore. The localities are responsible for their own drug boxes. There has been talk, and it's been for about five years, it's going away in Virginia. And that means the locality will be responsible for those drug boxes, okay? What they are coming out with in July is a, a modified version of that, where they are putting, they are making us carry our own fluids, our IV fluids, and supplies for IVs. That's the start. The, the kicker will be when they do take away the entire drug box and the narcotics are our responsibility, because as you can imagine, that brings a whole different level of federal guidelines. Also accountability, also rules and regulations of how you can house that type of, of equipment and medications. So what Locust Creek is trying to do is to plan for the future and also expand their building a little bit to house the career staff and the volunteers a little bit more comfortably. This gives them an area where they can store their medications and their EMS supplies, planning for the future also for when that drug box exchange program leaves the Commonwealth, and also to give them two more bays for apparatus. I think that's all I had on that. And this was their Phase One that they were going to do. Phase Two, if this goes through, Phase Two is internal, where they will change a little bit of their, their meeting room, their, their staffing area where the staff meet, eat, living quarters, basically, yes. And they will be expanding that a little bit in Phase Two, if this is approved.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Quarles.
How will you handle the drug box situation amongst the other stations? This one, you've made it for this one, but, you know, the other stations, can you speak on that?
Yes. Good questions, really good question, and we have been discussing it and trying to get ready a little bit for that over the last couple of years. So ultimately, your OMD, our, our Operational Medical Director, Dr. Vito, we're working with him to come up with a plan for this. How we envision it and see it is to start out with one location, just like a hospital hub, right? We are looking at Company One, Louisa, because it has to be a certain type of wall. It has to be blocked. Nobody could come in through the ceiling. It has to be camered. It has to be twen, either 24-hour staffed or camered. But the interesting part is the 24-hour staff has to be there. So even though you have 24-hour staffing at these stations, if they're on a call, that's not 24-hour staffing, according to the Board of Pharmacy. So it has to be camered.
Alarmed.
And alarmed, yes. So we are looking at one location. We want to nail this down really well. We are requesting in our budget for additional staffing to help us with handling those drug boxes, okay? ALS personnel that would help us handle those drug boxes and do the exchanges, much like a pharmacy at a hospital.
Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Doesn't the Sheriff's Department have a pharmaceutical collection program, that they'll take drugs?
Yeah. I, I bet.
They do, but that's generally expired drugs and medications from people who either don't need those drugs anymore, so they've switched their prescription medication, or people who have passed, and, you know, you collect a, a bunch of your family members' medications. That's different than we carry, you know, we carry about 100 different medications in the ambulance, and so we have to be able to, to stock those ambulances. You never know what their, your next call's going to be, so you can't really plan your call. So we, we carry all of those medications all the time, and so this is to be able to do that exchange, not just drop off the old ones. We have to be able to resupply it for the next call as well. So if I, we go out and we work an incident with a fairly critical patient, we use five or six medications, a couple bags of normal saline and things like that, we then have to be able to resupply those somewhere. Right now, we take the box that we got them out of, like she said, take them to the hospital, they give us a whole full box back, but that's going away, just a matter of when it goes away.
Is there any merit to combining their expired drug program with your partially-used drug program and coming up with some economic advantage by putting the two programs together?
I think where you'd see that the most is if we use half of a medication. So if I have a vial of medication, we use half of it. What do you do with the other one? Right now, they go into a certain dispensary, right? We'd also have to be responsible for the disposal of those. So I think that's actually, you know, that's a really good idea.
It is good.
You know, when we get into that and we have these medications, kind of collecting or expired medications, because, you know, if you stock 100 medicines, you never know which one's going to expire before it gets used. So we will have to come up with some way to dispose of those, and that's a, that's certainly one way to look at, right, saving some money and combining.
I'll see for you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for us? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can switch the amounts in two different fiscal years, not this year. It's just informational for them, but I'll make the change before the next week.
Next, we have General Services and Anderson Wolfalk.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Plaine Commission, Anderson Wolfalk, manager of the General Services Department. I'm here to talk to you about the same two that I talk about every year, landfill closure fund, the new cell development, but I've, I've got three on there this year, so hopefully this will be a little more interesting than my speech from the last four or five years that I've always rehearsed. So I will touch on the landfill closure fund and the cell development, just because I know we have a new member, Mr. Kersey, and I just kind of want to touch on that. I think everybody has been to the landfill at one point or time. So basically, our closure fund and our cell development are like savings accounts. We know at some point in time, when we go to start a new cell, or when we go to close the actual landfill, that we're going to have a very large expenditure. I believe one is 5.2 and the other is 5.9. So rather than waiting until that point and then the board has to make a big decision or come up with a large sum of money, we're basically putting away that amount every year for each one of those, so that we don't come up with that huge lump sum at one time and we actually have it ready when we need it, because there will be steps in between the process where we have to use a little bit at a time. It won't be all at the very end. Currently, right now, we are in, we have a closed permit, which has an AstroTurf cap, which we did in 2015. The next cell is a new set of cells, which is just a little bit further down than that, and that's cells one, two, and three that we're currently filling in, which is SWP 567 permit. Those have a capacity to run till about 2031, 2032. At that point in time, we will cap that, and then we will begin filling what we call Cell 4A and 4B, which is going to be in between the two, a piggyback, as they call it, and that will get us all the way till the year 2049. You know, when we do cells 4A and 4B, that's what most of the money is set aside here for the 5.2 million to go ahead and do new construction, and then after that, we'll actually have to enclose this, and then, of course, by that time, we'll begin processing for another set of cells, which will be what is now the borrow area. And so, of course, we'll, the closure fund and everything will just continue to transfer to the next one, so it's an ongoing thing. We also, the post-closure care, the closure fund, we have to actually guarantee the closure of that landfill for 30 years. We also have a bonding for that. So in 30, you know, if something happens in 30 years, something major where we have to do everything, that's basically to cover the cost. We unearth it all and haul it to another landfill is, is basically, in a nutshell, what happens. So that's pretty much the simple answer. So anyway, I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. I know I covered it fairly quick.
All right. So now some new stuff.
So the first one we'll talk about is the IGC, which is the Betty Queen Center, and that is the new flooring and wallboard replacement. That building is about 25,000 square feet. The gymnasium is 12,000 square feet of that, so almost half. Just the flooring alone in the gymnasium is going to be around 125,000. I, I got a quote for it a year ago that was about, well, two years ago, that was about 100,000, and of course, price increases, probably going to be around 125,000. The rest goes to carpet, the flooring in there. I don't know if any of y'all have been in there, but there's a, it's what they used to call years ago, an anti-slip flooring, and it has a texture to it. And people have gone away from that now because it, it just collects dirt really bad, and if you've ever been in there, you can tell the flooring looks really bad in the hallway. We also have some issues in the bathrooms where they did the wall. The wallboard comes up about six to eight inches, and normally in bathrooms, when you have that, it's like a rubberized flooring, you have it come halfway up the wall, because if it's down susceptible to the board, it's easy to break at the top, and we have issues like that. And, and the building was built, I believe it was completed in 2003, so we're getting to the age where, you know, we need to start replacing things. We also have a replacement for the roof, which I believe is out in 2029. Yes. So, you know, we're trying to take care of things before they become major problems. Obviously, you know, slips, trips, and falls is a big issue, and then roof leaks. So we've already put LED lights in that building. We're trying to invest in things and trying to do them before we actually have to do them in an emergency procurement kind of way, which is way more expensive than, you know, a planned project. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that. One thing I did forget to mention is we're also adding wallboard to the great room as part of this project and to the bathrooms and to the locker rooms, because we get a lot of damage and scratches to the paint just from people moving floor and chairs around. It's just something that you spend a little bit of money now, but rather than having to paint every year or two and drywall patch it, it saves you money over time.
Mr. Goodwin.
Thank you. Anderson, I was actually going to ask you about the roof, because I think everybody here got an email this week from a lady that's one of the pickleball players, and she says that there's a leak there now that regularly shuts down one of those courts, but we're not going to replace the roof until 2029?
Well, so what we have up there, and it's a little bit of an oddity, is, so they have two roofs that meet, and there is a gutter there, an actual internal gutter that butts up against there, and we have a lot of issues with that getting clogged, and after that, we had actually checked it and we had to clean leaves out of it. That's part of the issue with, with the leaks, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I just think if it's already leaking, 2029, so it weighs out.
No, we're not, we're not going to wait that long if it's actually an, an active leak, but yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Quarles.
A little follow-up on, Mr. Commissioner Goodwin. The, that leak that you just mentioned.
Yes, sir.
And cleaning out the leaves, how, how did it fare in the last storm? You had a fair amount of rain, though.
That, that was the last storm that it was leaking, and I believe.
Okay, so you've cleaned it out since then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we don't have anything other than the upcoming storms to gauge it by?
No, 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 sir.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to move on to the Fire Training Center updates, and this is actually updates for the burn building down there. The current burn building, which they train on, doesn't have power to it, doesn't have the powered exhaust fan. Right now, they run the generator, plug up to that and all that, so we're going to add, and this is mostly for safety, one of the issues they run into, if you're running a fire call, somebody had, or running training, somebody has a medical emergency, anything happens, you want to be able to shut that building down immediately, clear out all the smoke and everything, and of course, the way it's operating now is not exactly the best for that. So we want to add power, we add some controls, because right now, it's just simply flipping switches, anything like that. You know, if somebody has an emergency, you want to be able to clean the smoke out immediately. You want to have sealed lights that you can put in there. And one of the reasons the cost is so high is basically in a building like that, we're going to have heat, fire. You can't, you know, it's not like normal, I can't just run electrical through the walls and everything. It has to actually be mounted external on the building. It has to be so many inches outside from the heat source, so you don't melt your wires every time, you don't have circuit breakers, you don't actually have a fire training turn into an actual fire. And of course, all of that stuff, sealed lights, everything like that is usually two to three times, sometimes five times more expensive than your normal construction would be, so. And that, that's about the basic gist of that one. Does anybody have any questions about that? So the last one finally is the Louisa Family Practice Medical Center renovations. We took over the medical center building in 2019. We've actually done quite a bit, extensive bit of work. December 1st, we actually just moved the Virginia Health Department into the upper floors, which is adjacent to Louisa Family Practice. This renovation would be in Louisa Family Practices area. They have been asking to get it updated. Their section was built, I think, finished in the early 90s, and it's still a little outdated. We also have some issues we're going to address as far as security locks, things like that, changing over their locks to air kind of coring system, so it's, you know, continuous throughout the county. We have that at all our other buildings. We also want to add proximity locks for the exterior doors, so if somebody leaves, you know, you just basically click on the button, you don't have to change locks, you just can change it on the computer, Scott and them can. It includes new flooring, new paint. We also have some asbestos that we need to remediate, and when we did the VDH, we actually removed everything from that space inside the building. We also need to do that in the doctor's office. That's really only half of their section, the old section, which was built in 1952, had asbestos floor tiles, and we prefer to remove as much of that as we can when we have the opportunity. We actually, the, met, VDH's was just finished, and Region 10 currently, who's in the basement, will be moving to a new building. They're starting to construction, and so we'll probably end up doing a renovation on that. Of course, I haven't put in any CIP budgets yet, because that's not necessarily guaranteed, and we didn't know if that was actually going to happen at the point in time where I submitted my CIPs. So we're just trying to update that whole building. Chris, Mr. Chris Kuhn actually worked on the lease and got VDH in there, and so it's bringing in quite a bit of revenue to the county from that. We want to continue to keep Louisa Family Practice in there, because we get some revenue from them as well. And then in the future, we want to make, you know, try and draw in some more medical practices, something downstairs when Region 10 moves out, so. Any questions on that one?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Parks and Rec, James Smith.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and fellow members of the Plaine Commission. I have three projects that I'd like to talk to you all about tonight. The first one is the skate park. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the skate park. The Parks and Rec Department used to operate a skate park on site of the Betty Queen Center. It was relocated or it was removed so that the Health Department... It was relocated, or it was removed, so that the Health Department could be temporarily placed there. The Health Department is in the process of moving, and I think when it was removed, there was some understanding that a skate park would return. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the skate park. What we're looking at is to build 6,500 concrete, 6,500 square foot concrete skate park. Before, we had a concrete pad, and then with that pad, we also had either wooden ramps or fiberglass ramps. The issue with those type of ramps is that they don't last, and there's a lot of maintenance times, a lot of maintenance time, either downtime or maintenance time having to replace those ramps. So I would like to build something similar to, I don't know if you're familiar with either Gooseland Skate Park, which they just renovated in 2002. It's a two-phase project, they did half of it, and the first half they did is a concrete skate park, so if you want to look at something that looks very similar to what I am sharing with you, also, on a much larger scale, Charlottesville, if you've seen what they put in, in terms of their skate park, they actually replaced the outdoor pool and turned that into skate parks as well. Any questions or comments on the skate park?
Mr. Smith, that skate park that you're referring to on, in Charlottesville, is that on 250 West?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I'm going to go, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Goodman.
I'm going to go ahead and show my evidence. Are we talking about like a skating rink, or are we talking about half bikes?
So it is a, is an outdoor skate park that is accessible, mostly skated with skateboards, but also based on the concrete pad. You can also use BMX bikes, or even mountain bikes on it as well. So it'll be accessible with skateboards, if you have skates, regular bowling skates, you can use that as well, but for this case, the majority of the people using it will be using a skateboard.
Do you have bikes?
I don't know that, I'm not sure we're going to have that much. We have some called bowls, different ramps and things like that on it, yes.
I was just wondering about liability.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so this renovation then feeds business over for the renovation of Louisa Family Practice? So it's important to make that connection.
And expect an increase in firing EMS next year.
So it all ties together.
All connected, right.
Mr. Chair. One question.
Excuse me.
Mr. Weaver.
How close is the design to the one at McIntyre Park?
The one in McIntyre Park, you're talking probably about $1.5 million, if not more, so it'll be a lot smaller than that, but it'll still provide enough activity. Probably, if people are using, you can probably get at least 50 or 60 people on it at one time.
Mr. Dickerson?
I guess fortunately, I got to spend a lot of time at the McIntyre Park skate park with the grandkids, and one thing I noticed, the age levels, are we going to have something for the younger kids and the older kids, so they're not together, or?
Well, it'll be partitioned off, so, yeah, so that we'll have different ramps and different, I guess, areas where it would accommodate based on the age of the user.
Great.
It was funny, I was watching an actual skating event on TV this weekend, it was all females, and the oldest competing, I think, was in their mid-30s, and the youngest was 10. The 13, a 13-year-old won that, though, so you just never know.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions on skate park? Okay. The next one, what I would like to talk about is the Recreation and Sports Center. I'm looking for a facility that would be very similar to a gymnasium. If you think about one gymnasium, you have one basketball court, you have two volleyball courts, you have four pickleball courts, space for extra programming, and right now, I think Anderson mentioned a little bit about the Betty Queen Center. We have one facility that was built, or opened, built in 2002, opened in 2003. At that time, the population of Louisa County was, I think, like 20, 27,027, 27, 027. As of the census in 2022, the population of the county was 40,116, which is a 48% increase. In terms of our facility, we still have the Betty Queen Center, in terms of what we are able to utilize mostly for our operational standpoint, to be able to provide programs, and it's not just, not just basketball. I don't know if you had a chance to look through our brochure, it's sports, it's toddler programming, you see a lot of programs, and you'll see that green gym floor, because we do a little bit of everything in there, whether it's a father-daughter dance, mother-son dance. We utilize that space to the point now where we need more space to grow, and as, from a recreational standpoint, we are growing, we're consistently adding more, doing more, and hopefully trying to serve more people in the county, and it's not just youth, it's youth on up. So again, the pickleball is probably the one thing that you hear a lot about right now, because it is one of the areas, it's probably the fastest-growing program that we do have. But that coincides, when you start looking at the growth in population, from 2002, 2003 to 2022, the fastest-growing age group in Louisa County was 65-plus, all right? 50 to 64 is the largest age group here in the county. And think about who's playing pickleball right now. Right now, it's people in that age group that are coming out. Unfortunately, we're not able to offer, because of additional programming, additional space needs, we're not able to offer programs, or offer pickleball in the evening, which would be a prime time to be able to get youth involved after school. We've got basketball, I said volleyball going on there, we have pickleball in the morning, we have dance classes, tumbling, we would like to have karate in there, but we can't find a day to get karate, so karate, we do karate in the same room that the senior center is operated in. And karate is probably one of our, maybe second or third-largest programs that we have consistently operated throughout the year, so. Yeah, I think that's, that's it. The other, the other opportunity I will say, you know, from a tourism standpoint, will be the sports side of it. When you look at the numbers and metrics, the Virginia Tourism Corporation, they do before every year that talks about the stats and the growth of each county based on tourism, and there's several different factors. One of the areas that they focus on is recreation. Now, when you look at Louisa County, you compare it with maybe like Orange County, their recreation number is a lot higher in terms of the millions of dollars that come in, ours is a lot lower. But when you look at our total number, with all the different categories combined, we're a lot higher. Recreation is, tends to be based on things that require a ticket, athletic events. We don't offer sports tourism. We don't offer tournaments, because we don't have the space to provide people that are traveling into the community, to offer recreational fields. We're working on turf fields, that'll be a big help from that standpoint, but to have two basketball courts, now, you do have two basketball courts to offer tournaments, all right? You also have eight pickleball courts now, to do pickleball tournaments, or four volleyball courts. These are the type of things that even one gym brings to the table that would help us out, not just from a standpoint of being able to operate Parks and Rec programming, but also the standpoint of a tourism aspect as well.
Mr. Smith, so now, my question has nothing to do with tournaments and sports tourism, that sort of thing, it's focusing on Parks and Recreation for Louisa citizens.
Yes.
So, I know pickleball is one of the things that's driving the conversation right now, because there's so much interest in it. I was reading an article in the CV this afternoon that came out today, talking about this, and it seemed to be kind of a, an encouragement that we need more pickleball space because of the overcrowding. I found it interesting that one of the people that they interviewed got quite a few comments from, was a Spotsylvania resident, and she says she comes down here because she can get in and play down here. Well, so my question is, how many people who play pickleball here, using our, our facilities that we pay for as a county, come from out of the county?
That's something we don't currently track. I don't think it's a large number, I think when she's talking about she can come here and play, what we do is we separate, so if we have a Monday, we have two hours for a certain group of pickleballers, whether it's the advance, and by separating, now you weed it out, so it's not as busy the whole time that people are there. We could have a newbie in there playing, or we have a sort of just-for-fun group, so they come out, it's not as competitive, but they come out and play. So a lot of times, when you say they can get in and play, it's the group that they can get in to play, not because of the space being available, being able to fit in and not just coming, a lot of, you go to Spotsylvania, you go to other counties, a lot of times the players are very competitive, and if you have someone that hasn't been playing that long, then it's hard for them to get into a location and play, because nobody wants that person as they are at the same level.
I understand that, but it seems to me like if they're having that kind of problem, they live in Spotsylvania, Spotsylvania ought to be spending their tax money on build more pickleball courts to accommodate them, rather than have them come in here and spend our tax money. I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, used to ride horses a lot, and Pleasant Grove down in Fluvana is a beautiful place to ride, and when they opened that up to riding, we had an opportunity like twice a year, because we weren't Fluvana residents, to go down there and ride, and I understood that.
Right.
I mean, it was their tax money paying for it, so I just, you know, just asking the question, wondering if we're, you know, spending a lot of our tax money to invite many of the counties around, to send everybody down here, and, you know, we, we just don't have facilities for it, so.
Right.
It's, it's interesting, it came out in the paper that way today, I just was curious. Mr. Quarles?
Mr. Smith, maybe you can speak to, there is, there's some revenue that's generated from pickleball, right?
Yeah, there is some revenue that's generated.
Membership or something?
Because of the continued use, we have membership cards, and like I tell you, from 2022, I think, between 2022 and 2023, I think it's been like a 40% increase in, in, in those membership cards, like 440 of those cars renewed, there's, there's revenue that's coming in, when you compare it to maybe being able to replace the cost of a gym, no, it's not, but they do bring revenue, whether it's, you know, Spotsylvania or Louisa County, there is revenue that's coming in. We have a, instead of having a punch pass, we have a membership card that they will purchase, scan it, and then when they, you know, it takes off three to four dollars each time they come in.
And roughly, what kind of membership do you have, a total, I mean, idea of how many people that you have enrolled, or?
So we probably, that are, I think we have about 200 that are on a regular basis coming in and play. Besides that, we don't have an enrollment piece to it, but on a regular week, we probably have about 200 individuals that are coming in. We're teaching multiple classes every month, beginners class, and a lot of, it's not just me asking for a gym to have a gym, it's because the need is there. Pickleball is a big part of it, but also for our exercise programs, our wellness initiatives that we're trying to do, what we're trying to bring from the standpoint of facilities and places for youth to use, we, you know, you've heard a talk about, you know, being able to expand to possibly, I think, five or six elementary schools, how does that impact recreation? You know, it's the same type of thing, you know, we are in a position where we're trying to expand and be able to accommodate that need as well, from a recreational standpoint. So maybe before, where we had four, nine-to-eleven-year-old basketball teams, maybe it's up to eight basketball teams, and try to create a practice schedule for eight basketball teams with one facility, when they play on, on Saturday, and knowing that they can't get in there until 6 o'clock, if you don't want them out after 9, it's a difficult, you know, process as well with one facility.
Mr. Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. James, so you don't collect any geographic information from your participants?
Yes.
You do?
Yes.
But you don't know about the people from Spotsylvania?
I, I couldn't stand here right now and give you an adequate, you know, amount, I could follow up with you tomorrow, if you are alike with that information, I could pull that from the computer.
Well, I was just, no, I was actually going along some of the same lines that Chairman was going, but I was wondering, if you don't have that data, you say you do, so the question has moved, but if you don't have that data, how do you decide where you're going to build a future facility? If the pickleball demand is at Spring Creek, do we really want to build a facility in Bumpus, and vice versa? So, but you do have that data?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
Of course, the sport you're talking about is really growing, pickleball, and I guess we got, we, we're the ones to blame for that, because we started teaching it in physical education, when I was teaching physical education. So they, it, it's, it's not something that's just jumping on the people right now, it, the age group is jumping on people, because those people are the ones that are starting to play it. I know they have a, they have three nights that they play at Piedmont Christian School in the lower end of the county, and they're just swamped, and it's all pickleball. Those people just love it, but I'd love to see you be able to do something with that.
Right, thank you. And, and again, we haven't even had the opportunity to expose youth to pickleball yet. I know the school systems are starting to do it.
I'd like George to play some pickleball.
You want to play George, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
I just told him, I said, I wouldn't know how to play, I don't even know what it is.
Yeah, you would, you'd be good at it.
Just stand there and hold the racket, George.
I think he's wanting a work session next month.
He'd be good at it, yeah. It's a, it's a great swing.
Any other questions on sports facility, recreation sports facility?
Right, thank you.
Thank you. And the last project that I just want to talk about would be the aquatic facility, and that would be putting 400,000, again, aside towards the indoor, indoor enclosed aquatic facility, spinning the budget. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Quarles?
The aquatic facility that you're talking about, is this, can you speak more to the size of it, is that, is that Olympic size?
Yes, yes, so what we're probably looking to be a junior Olympic size pool. One is able to be used by both the school system for their meets, also the local community swim team for their meets as well. Now, I don't think we will be able to put in something that will accommodate the diving program with the high school, but from the standpoint of, again, for their meets, the swimming part of it, we should be able to accommodate those, but also accommodate the community. One of our biggest activities during the summer is our, our, our physical therapy classes, or wellness classes, swim classes, outdoor exercise classes, those type of classes that we host in the pool as well.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Quarles?
Okay, so, James, is there, is there a possibility in this, what you have here, for swim meets that would like, that with US Swim, the groups that are involved in that, I don't know if Louisa County has a team in that program, that go to Richmond and some of the other places?
Right, so right now, there is a group, it's called the Gators, it's a separate nonprofit, that utilizes the, our facility, our outdoor facility, but throughout the year, they have no access to, you know, indoor facility. I think they compete in a program out of Charlottesville, but not Richmond, yes.
So this, this new facility would accommodate?
Yes, sir.
Those kind of meets, and then even if there was a championship or something like that, we'd be able to host it or whatever?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And the last set of projects are for the airport. Ed Jarvis could make it tonight, and he did go into some detail last time, but I'll, I'll try to kind of give an overview. So, in the past, we haven't included the airport projects, because we don't budget for grants, and all the airport projects are federally and state-funded, but we decided to keep with our 20-year plan and keep these monies in sight, so we know when to plan for it, when we'll need it. We tried to look at the matches to these grants. So, Ed, Mr. Jarvis, he did make a chart, the last page of your book, with when he expected to get funding to do certain projects within the airport, how much the state portion would be, how much the federal portion would be, and how much the county portion would be, so that we could plan it going into the future versus coming to the board with a bug- so that we could plan it going into the future versus coming to the board with a budget supplement, like he normally does, if they have something that they needed as they get approved. If for some reason the federal or state funding is delayed, these projects would be delayed and pushed out as well. But these amounts that are listed, and I have them all highlighted, because it was new to our capital plan, and I just wanted to kind of go over it as a higher level. But like the south side taxiway construction, the south side apron taxiway and hangar site design, it's like a design and construction, and there's like three pieces to it. Design, construction, and planning, I believe are the three. The ones that are in twenty twenty-five, he already has grants approved for. So the ones that we, you'll, we will ask you to consider over the next one, we do look to get those grants in fiscal year twenty-five. Those projects, it's only like a two percent portion for the county. The additional ninety-eight is paid for with federal funding. If you have any really detailed questions, I can email him and get those for you. And he will be here at the next meeting, he assures me. So maybe before we do the public hearing, if you have some detailed questions or burning desires that you think of at the last minute, I can get those as well. Anything on that? If not, that concludes our work session with the capital projects, and I appreciate you having us here tonight. And at the next meeting, we'll have the public hearing and ask that y'all approve and adopt the pieces that y'all feel as so desire to move up to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cholton.
Yes.
Just one little, just one little question.
Absolutely.
Just wondering, I know we've got some big ticket items on here this year.
Yes.
And I see we had seventy-three million.
Yes.
Uh, what was last year's?
We were forty-some million last year. The big part in last year's capital was the Shannon Hill Business Park. So that was like twenty-seven million was for the business park. But we did get like eleven million six hundred to go towards that in grant funding. So that, it would include that, where the revenue for the grant would offset it in the revenues. But that was a big portion of it last year. So the big pieces this year are the schools. The school and the CTE, and that would be debt issue for those projects. And then if the water, um, the wastewater treatment plant is also anticipated to be a debt issue at the point that, that would be moved forward as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Big number.
More? Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
No, ask anything.
Um, I'm just trying to understand this. You, you said that last year was forty-some million?
Yes.
And but eleven million of that was, was, was grant?
So in the expenditure side, we included all twenty-seven million. And then in the revenue side, there was an offset for eleven million that would net it down to the sixteen point nine million that we would need.
So we actually asked for last year sixteen?
The net, it would be additional sixteen million that would be debt issue, that we're getting ready to issue for in twenty-four.
How much of the seventy-three is going to be facilitated with grants?
The
Or do we anticipate?
Are you talking about the Lake Anna wastewater treatment plant? Oh, of the seventy-three, oh. Of the seventy-three, what's shown on here, none of this will be grants.
So in comparison, we're looking at seventeen thousand versus seventy-three thousand?
Yeah, it's a big difference. Yeah, so probably thirty thousand if you take out the, thirty-one thousand if you take out the grants from last year of the actual what the county will be paying for in capital in twenty-four, will go to seventy-three in twenty-five. Projects are a necessity, but they're expensive, and so that's, that's what those are. Okay, anything else? All righty, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and we will move on to LDR twenty twenty-three zero four, Proposed Amendments, Land Development Regulation. Mr. Gillespie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Our attorney went, uh, I was going to say Mr. Mullen, but he stepped out for a second. So you have before you a draft code amendment, uh, LDR, uh, land development regulations. And we briefed you on this last month, it was coming. Uh, I do apologize, and I'll say it again in my director's report, but apologize for my illness, my absence at your last meeting. I had the flu, unfortunately, so I'm, I'm even a little, uh, even a little loose on, on what came from board and what was reported out from board to commission. But this is coming from the board. What this is recognizing is that there is duplicative work, and it really creates an unnecessary, um, back and forth, or really an unnecessary step that leads to some potential back and forth, um, as it relates to the development along the shoreline of Lake Anna. Uh, Lake Anna is owned and controlled by Dominion Energy, as everybody knows. They have a process which, which was detailed at your last meeting. Again, I wasn't here, so I may have missed some of the, you know, the head nods or quizzical looks. If anybody wanted more information, we're happy to get into that. But essentially, they have guidelines which kicks off a process for them to get a land use, the equivalent of a land use permit, um, to be able to build over the water. And that process then comes to Louisiana County with a building permit. We have to, we have to have that approval from Dominion. And then we essentially apply the same criteria, uh, for development that they have in the guidelines for development on the lake. So there should be no difference in the outcome. Um, and, um, at the end of the day, it is their lake and their property. And so, uh, what is suggested, uh, and proposed from the board for consideration is to repeal part of the, uh, section related to the Lake Anna, uh, land use and development standard section. And repeal part is a little funny, really, it's just to remove part. But to repeal that, those sections that relate to the duplicative standards, uh, those that are not necessary. And then to move those standards that are really more broadly applied, uh, for lighting, for example, dark sky lighting, to the section of the code that otherwise relates. Again, from listening to the, um, information and reading the minutes, I think you all asked some questions and had conversation on this. Happy to answer those again, we put it on the work session agenda, so you'd have the opportunity to engage a little bit in any questions. I think that covers, I think that covers what we wanted to cover again. Are there any questions for staff, um, in your work session?
Yes, uh, Mr. Gillespie, everything that's being removed from the current code, can it be mapped directly into, um, whatever location? I assume it's all under Dominion's process. Can it be mapped directly there, so we see a one-for-one on each one of the requirements? Or are we losing something, or assuming that some things are fairly similar? How does that work?
Yeah, great question, uh, with three examples of, of how it could go. There are a couple of things that are lost. Um, there are some details in the county code, I, I wouldn't, I would say the intent, um, of the two is to have, to be joined. Um, there is some detail in the county code section that is not in the Dominion guidelines. For the most part, you can map it item to item, subject to subject, and regulation or standard to standard. Again, there are some things in the county standards that are a little more detailed. And there are some things in the Dominion guideline, in the application of the Dominion guidelines, that are some unwritten policies and practice in the Dominion, uh, reservoir coordinators kind of back pocket. Doesn't matter, as long as it shows up to us with a Dominion approval on it, then they can, they should get a building permit, because it's met the standards. We can do that, if you would like to see where those exist. But like I said, for the most part, it maps. There are some things that are more detailed in the county standards.
I would be curious
The intent would, if I may? The intent would be for the county not to have standards that vary from the Dominion standards. That, that is part of the, you know, the purpose of this, is to, if there is some discrepancy, to strike it where the discrepancy doesn't belong, which is on the county side, given that it's a, um, corporately maintained and corporately operated resource.
So, um, if, well, I would be interested, would have been interested in seeing, um, which items were not, could not be mapped to Dominion. Uh, the reason is, I'm curious first, which are they?
Sure.
Um, and are they really something Dominion might care about? Or something that the county might care about, but really isn't under Dominion's purview? Or they wouldn't want to regulate it one way or the other, or care if we did? So, I, I mean, I just, I can't tell that from, we're striking this out, and it's the recommendation, so.
I will say Tom Eglin is our expert on the application of these standards, because he's been doing so for about six years. The one, one of the ones that comes to mind, and I don't want to misquote it, but I believe it's in the safe navigation section related to approaches or, uh, channels. And we have a little detail that's different than the Dominion detail, but in practice, it's applied the same way. So it's an example of a subset of something that we do the same way they do. Ours reads a little differently, it's a little more detailed, but it does the same thing. Tom is available to you as staff, if you want to ask that question and maybe pick his brain a little bit more. He would, he would have a couple, uh, a couple dozen, if not a couple hundred examples of, um, cases that have been reviewed in the last couple of years. So if you, if you'd like to do that now, it's a good time to do it.
Well, maybe so, I mean, I don't want to go through it exhaustively. I'm just, I'm just curious, because I, you know, we get, we get these things to evaluate. And what we get is, here's the current code, we're striking all this out.
Right.
So would you like to approve it? Well, I'd like to know more about it. I'd like to know how we came up with what we got here, that's all.
Right.
Yeah, because I really have no clue.
Yeah, and I know we put in your, um, in your packet last month, the Dominion guidelines. I, I believe we did not put the Dominion guidelines in your packet this month, so I, I apologize for that. We can bring those up on the screen if you want to look at them again. If I remember correctly, the Dominion guidelines are about two pages. Because the font size is larger, the county, county standards are about three pages. The formatting's different, they're a little tighter to the left, and we, we have subsections. And some of that detail exists in those subsections.
Yeah, I, I don't want to belabor it, I just want to find out, is there anything of substance that is there? That's all I'm after.
I hate to put anybody on the spot, because I, honestly, I cannot answer that question very well on the spot. But I would ask Tom if he has, you know, again, an allegory or an example of something that's similar, but a little different. Or, or if there's nothing, to just say, you know, here's, here's the way it's been working. Would you, would you like to ask the same question?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Tom, can you?
Can I add one more question to that?
Yes.
When was this shoreline ordinance created and why?
Um, again, I listened in on the meeting last time, I think we, um, I think we talked about that. Um, Mr. Barlow spoke, okay, so he spoke at some, uh, level of detail on the historical background. It was either two thousand three or two thousand five, I think two thousand three. Yeah.
Dominion, if I may, um, didn't have very many regulations. As a matter of fact, the thing that really bothers me about this, and I'm all for getting rid of regulations, but I remember the fifteen acre townhouse that was going out on the lake. I mean, that's where the development was, fifteen acres over the water, at New Bridge, at two oh eight. And that had gotten, that had gotten past Dominion. That was brought to the, uh, uh, to the planning commission. And the, what we were told was, by the developer, that it was out on the water, it was Dominion's lake, that we had no say in it, it was no jurisdiction over it. Well, I would say we regulate farmers who have ponds, it's land under that water. And that, uh, that's pretty much when our shoreline and all of that stuff came about, because we, uh, determined that they indeed did not have a right to go out there and build a fifteen acre, uh, development out on the water. And so that's, that's where it kind of got started. And my concern with this is, we, we have our ordinances that apply to everybody, every land on in Louisiana County. Dominion is a landowner. There's land under that water, so I don't see how we can say, well, it's Dominion's land and Dominion's lake. There's a whole lot of people in Louisiana County that we don't say, well, it's, it's Tommy Barlow's land, we're not, we don't regulate that. I mean, it's sort of the same thing, what I'm getting at, but we, we came up with the, uh, ordinances around the lake, because Dominion didn't have anything. Now, a lot of what they've done has matched what we came up with. You know, the, the one-third rule and all of this kind of stuff. Well, now they have it. But what happens if they decide, well, you know, we're not, we don't want to regulate it? And the county still does. I'm not, I'm not so sure you, you want to give up that authority. When, uh, you know, Dominion is a landowner in Louisiana County, just like Cy Weaver and everybody else. So, uh, where you have duplicate, if, if, if Dominion's, uh, regulations are matching with Louisiana County, that's fine. Maybe you can narrow the process down, I'd love to see that, but I just, I think you need to be careful when you give away your control over stuff that's, especially when you're talking about some of the size of Lake Anna. I mean, that, that was my concern with it before. And I know where we were before we had the ordinances.
So
Thank you for helping educate the commission and remind me, because I remember you, you, you relayed that history before.
So let me, let me just ask a question of Mr. Mullins, um, if I might. Because you raised an interesting point, Mr. Barlow. So everywhere we have a farm that's zoned agricultural, A one, A two, whatever, has a pond on it, the zoning includes the pond. Now, Dominion sits on property, on soil, that's, uh, zoned industrial, if I remember correctly.
The plant is.
The plant, now, so, uh, since the lake is, hang on, let me ask my question, because I'm just curious. Since the lake is a part of the industrial facility, was created by the, the Dominion, the entity, as a part of its industrial operation, they bought the, uh, the land, they control the land. Should not the lake be industrial zoning? I'm just asking the question. Uh, would that, would that be a similar kind of thing? I, I don't know, I mean, maybe that's a silly question, but Mr. Barlow just raises a question in my head.
Get into the definitions of waters of the US.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Mullins, and we'll just
This, it's been a question, uh, that's been raised to me for the last fifteen years, since I first came here. As a matter of general riparian rights, the state usually owns the riverbed, right? There, there are certain differences, and, and that does come into the navigable waters of the US. And remember, it was formed in roughly nineteen seventy-two, filled in eighteen months, uh, by damming a, a navigable waterway, right?
Yes.
And so there's a complex interplay of federal law, state law, and then local ordinance that govern the use of that. The private side is slightly different, and even Dominion itself has avoided the question for years. So I'm not going to ask, answer the question as to the, the private side. But I will say, it became pretty clear that the county can regulate that which is built on it when the New Bridge project that you described was first brought up. So that the county does have the right, uh, to regulate the land use as it impacts the lake from the land, right? As it impacts the lake from the land. Whether or not a particular piece of property is going to be zoned industrial out to the Louisiana border, because remember, Spotsylvania controls half and Louisiana controls half. Whether or not that industrial zoning would apply to the water itself, I don't know. That's a, that's a very good question, I don't know. I will say, with regards to the private side, Dominion has always, and rightfully so, defended its right to say what can and cannot go into what is a waste heat treatment facility. That, that's what the private side is.
Exactly.
Right? And so, um, I would have to defer to Dominion on that, because they've always asserted property rights, privacy, and use rights. And, and I think that's right for the waste heat treatment facility. How, I guess maybe in the abstract, it's difficult to answer, but if, if it were to be, if you do have the authority out to the, to the county line to regulate as industrial zoning, what would that look like?
I, I don't know.
I don't either.
But I was, um,
Might I make a suggestion?
Well, you, you, you might.
Every zone, whether there's an abutment between industrial and either residential, or we'd have to look at the setbacks on each one of them. That's one thing you'd have to do if you made it industrial.
And that's why I asked for a hypothetical, because I, uh, just to answer it in the abstract. And that's why I asked for a hypothetical, because I, just to answer it in the abstract, I don't know if we're looking at setbacks, I don't know if we're looking at uses, I don't know if we're looking at impact on neighbors, but, but certainly setbacks.
Are you a buffer?
That's what I'm saying. I call it setback buffers or whatever.
And all of a sudden, we put them in non-compliance.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not suggesting any of that, I'm just thinking, do we need to answer that question all along the way here? Not, not maybe for changing this, but it's raising some interesting questions. Mr. Barlow.
That discussion is also going back, and what I'm getting at is, just like you have overlay districts, you can have a different set of rules for what's on the water, the water. I mean, you can have that. And it's still not impact, you know, you wouldn't have to make it all industrial or something. You could have, just like our ordinance has here, you know, the landowner goes down to the byline, and then from there, Dominion owns it, and we have the shoreline regulations that dictate what you can do between now. And like I say, they were created because Dominion, when George O'Connell was down there, it was like, yeah, that looks good, go ahead. And then, so we came up with the shoreline regulations. But I, like I say, I, I'm sort of mixed on it, because I, the fewer ordinances and regulations we can have, the better I like it. But by the same token, just because, you know, Dominion is a landowner in this county, just like everybody else. And so any landowner that has a large pond on their lake, and I'll tell you something else that came up, heard of the same thing. A tower company came in and, and had the idea, well, we can put a tower in this pond, and we don't need a conditional use permit or anything. By that same theory that if we're not going to regulate, you know, what's over the water, that was, that was, you know, more recent type thing, when we started talking about not being able to regulate Dominion's lake.
Absolutely.
So it, it was just sort of a scenario that, that popped up. But I think you would be able to regulate that just as well as you can what goes on on the lake.
Yeah, all right. I, this, that, and that question, thank you all for your opinions on that. I think that question probably, I've, I've gotten us too far off track of what we're really here to talk about. I apologize for that. There's no need really to go into the discussion here, it's going to use time. We could better use a different way. Mr. Goodwin.
You beat me to that one, because I, I was going to request, what are we giving up that's not being picked out? But I do have some other things. And this, I don't know what packet page it is, but on the iPad, it's on page seven. It's about lighting. One's just a technicality. Needs to be some visibility of the lamp, it needs to go back under A, and then you renumber C and D to B and C.
Yeah. I agree.
That's just a technicality. But now, I will ask the lawyer to weigh in on this. Usually, a ordinance or a state law doesn't use the word "should." They use two words, "shall" or "may." And if this is what you want, your lighting requirements to be, then I would suggest every "should" should be changed to "shall."
Hey, Mr. Goodwin, there's a question in there for me. The answer is yes. It's easy.
I just wanted you to correct me if I'm wrong.
Shortest answer you're going to get from an attorney, yes.
So, so my, so my question still stands, and I'm going to, I'd like to know what, what, what can't be mapped directly, so I'll know what we'd be giving up. And I guess that's something we can talk about at the public hearing then. Because, I mean, I'm, if I don't know what it is I'm giving up, what doesn't map from one to the other, then I'm not inclined to make any changes. Because I, you know, if we're going to vote tonight, I just, I have no information to make it on.
Just to summarize the meeting that we had with Dominion, and what started this whole process, is ultimately, what we have right now is, individuals have to go through this process to get approval, to even start the process to build on Dominion property. So right now, what we're doing is Dominion made it abundantly clear, the agreement to build on Dominion easement is between Dominion and the property owner. They are not going to worry about our rules and standards, because it's between the property owner and Dominion to build on their easement. So because of that statement and that stance that they've taken, this is an attempt to try and remove the extra regulation that they have to jump through to get an approval to build on Dominion property, when ultimately, this is an issue between Dominion and the property owner, if they want to build on that property. We still have the building permit requirements, we still have statewide building code regulations that have to be abided by. So that's the 30,000-foot view of why we're talking about this, is because we've had the conversation, it's starting to get a little more convoluted, back in creeks and stuff like that, access to the waterways and stuff. And like I said, Dominion's stance has been and is that it's between Dominion and the property owner regarding building in that easement. So that's what the ultimate goal of this is.
Mr. Barlow.
I certainly agree, it's between Dominion and the property owner, them allowing the property owner to build that.
Correct.
But once they have said, okay, you can build that, then I think I would be reluctant to give away our authority to say you can, what you can build. In other words, as long as Dominion regulates it, and we know what they're doing, then that's, that's fine. But I'm saying, if Dominion says, we don't care what you build that, then I think that's, that's what concerns me is. You don't have, if Dominion takes a stance, and I've heard it before, as long as the water flows, they don't care. And that was early on. Well, you know, if they take that stance again, then how do you know what possibly could be built out there? What they may agree to?
And if, if that's the case, then we very well can just address this ordinance every single year and amend it. Because that's the other thing, is we don't want to be in a position where the county says, no, you can't build a dock or a boathouse on this property, and Dominion says, yes, you can, and now we're in court, having a conversation about property rights, because it's, we're talking about building on Dominion if it's allowed by state code. It's just one of those things that we're trying to address a problem before it gets there, but we're starting to get there. So more than happy to have conversations and look at alternatives, but that's ultimately the reason why we're trying to look at this now.
So, so, Mr. Coons, can I exert authority over the land I own and set up my own requirements? And therefore, as long as I prove what I want to put on there, I can build, and you can't do anything about it?
No. And same way, this wouldn't have the same effect or authority. If your neighbor wanted to build on your property, and you said, yes, you absolutely can build on my property if you do X, Y, and Z, then they have the authority to build X, Y, and Z, as long as it's in with the statewide building code and meets all the other rules and regulations. It's not, this isn't abandoning ship, and there are no rules and regulations over the water anymore. So I, that's a misconception, that I think we started off on a track that that assumption was made, and that's what we're giving up, and that's not the case.
Is this the same ordinance we ran into when we were dealing with Pleasance Landing?
Wasn't here to speak to that.
That's a...
How many of them were there?
That was setback issues.
Setback.
Just setback.
That was all setback?
Yeah. It's not this.
Correct.
Same, similar thing would apply, though, if, if Dominion told Mr. Valerie, yeah, you can do this, and we don't have any regulations, then there wouldn't have been any argument from our side. It would have been, in other words...
I do, I do need to add to that. I mean, it is a setback issue. The setback for structures from the lake is five feet, would remain five feet with this amendment. So that would not change. And that was the issue, that in the Valerie case, they had gone over the five feet. This would not change the setback from, of structures from the lake.
Also, there were some safety concerns when it came to the, the Valerie...
Right, but just on the planning and zoning issues.
Building without permits.
I would add, and we can, we can bring this back in your hearing. I'm sorry, we had, we had set this up to identify that there were unique items to Louisa County, and I, I just kind of glossed over where those were. In Section C, Items 4 and 5, I can give you the whole, the whole site, but it's basically the standards for common areas and commercial areas are unique to Louisa County regulations. It requires some things like bathrooms and common areas that Dominion has. It's basically a landside development, it's not a shore, I mean, it's on the shoreline, in the shoreland area. But those are standards unique to this code that Dominion does not have any standards for. And so we can look at those, but that's, no, Items 4 and 5 under subsection C. Neighbor policies is the...
What are you doing?
Any other questions on this?
It's clear as muddy water.
Yeah, I, I don't, I'm like you, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's, it seems like a bold statement to me. It sounds like they're saying, y'all can't do anything on that water, and you can't regulate anything on that water.
Well, right now, what's happening is there are situations where Dominion will say, no, you're not approved to build a dock or a boathouse in this area. Then the developer, builder, contractor wants to come to Louisa, and then gripe and complain and try and get us to approve it, and then try and pit, well, Dominion said I could do it to Louisa, or Louisa said I could do it to Dominion, to try and get these docks that probably shouldn't be there. And right now, what's happening is we're in the middle of a situation that, like I said, when we met with Dominion, the ability to build on that property in that easement...
Is their call.
Is their call, because it's the right to build on their property. That's ultimately where the crux of this is. Now, how exactly we do that, or if they get approval, then we run through the process? That's what we're talking about, is instead of saying, oh, you need to do all these things to get Louisa approval, right now, how it is, they're supposed to go to Dominion and get Dominion approval before it comes to Louisa. Then we look at it, and once we look at it, if it's in accordance with our code and our regulations, then it starts going through the process. All we're saying is cut that section where it goes through our process. If they've got Dominion approval, then we don't go through the same regulations that they've got. Because if we've got comments or catch something different, then they may have to change it, which then they have to go back through Dominion to get approval for that process again. So it keeps...
Keeps going.
Keeps going.
So, so, so what you're saying is that the things we're cutting out, we don't care if they do or not? And we're not going to regulate it, we're not going to tell them they can't do it?
I mean, if they were to change substantially, I would hope that staff would bring this back.
So, well, the hope is not a strategy, that's what they used to tell us at the power plant. So, so, so Dominion, yeah. Yeah, darn well believe it. So, so if you're talking about these docks that shouldn't be there, that people are doing, I mean, are you saying that you're going to take stuff out of the, our regulation now, so that they can go ahead and do it? And you don't think they should be there, but it's too bad?
If they don't get Dominion approval, they don't get anywhere with the county.
All right.
So we don't have to exert any staff time, we don't have to exert time answering questions, they go to Dominion. If they can't get past Dominion, guess what, they don't come to us. We don't waste staff payer money, we don't, or taxpayer money on staff time, having conversations about how to try and make it work and try and design these projects for them. It's just, it's a waste on our end. So however we want to do that is more than fine, but...
For the public hearing, I'd really like to know what it is that we don't think is important. So if you all could identify those sections that are not important, that don't line up with anything that Dominion requires, that'd be great. Mr. Barlow.
Hasn't it always been the policy that they had to go to Dominion first?
Yes, and...
And has that changed?
Yes, and, no, no, it hasn't changed, but in recent years, you just have a lot of contractors and developers that want to come to us first, to try and help through the process, and...
You could stop that.
However they want to say.
I would think.
Well, and that, that's the whole thing, that's what we're getting to, and...
From when would, the time we started this stuff, even back to George O'Connell, when they finally gave him a title, you had to go to, you had to get Dominion's blessing before you built a dock or what have you.
Correct.
So, you know, that should still be the case, if, in other words...
And that's how it is.
They shouldn't be coming here for a building permit before they get something from Dominion.
Correct. And what they're doing now is they're requesting staff help them design their project to try and get it approved, before they go to Dominion.
And just tell them, no, thank you.
Exactly. So that's part of what we're trying to address here.
That can be solved without an ordinance change, seems like, but I don't know.
Yep, that's why we've given it to you for two months. So like I said, we continue to work on this, and if you guys want an alternative, we're happy to hear alternatives. I mean, that's, if it's not ready, then we can table it.
As I said, I'd, I'd like to see those, those items during the public hearing. Would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to defer it, then?
I want to see the left-hand column and the right-hand column matched up between what our interests are and what Dominion's, and see if there's any missing links in there.
I would too.
And I think it's too much to ask for tonight. It's unfair to ask for that tonight.
I agree.
But I, I would like to see that before I cede the county's interest.
I agree with that.
Yep.
All right.
We can work on that for next month.
We will, we will take that up during the agenda, approval to defer. Unless I need to have a motion now during the work session. But I don't think that's, I don't think you can. So, yeah, very good. All right. Seeing the hour and recognizing that I'm always attempting to provide a little bit of space between the two meetings, we're going to not hear anything on the public facilities section. We heard that last month, and we're going to go ahead and close the work session now, and we'll take that up during the public hearing. So, work session.